Going to call. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:01. And welcome, everybody. First order of business is public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Please. Put your name in the chat or raise your hand. Okay. Seeing none. I will entertain a motion to approve the June 9th, 2021 Board of Education meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Brendan. Is there any discussion?
I did notice one typo when there was referred to as Mr. O'Brien instead of Mr. O'Neal. Other than that.
They're close, they're close Brendan.
We will, we will make sure that gets corrected. Thank you, Brendan.
In the published, in the published packet, Mr. O'Neal, it is correct.
Okay, thank you Janet.
You're welcome.
So without any further comments, I'll take a rule call vote, please Janet.
Dr. Cabana Owen.
I have to abstain, I was absent that day.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Ms. I.
Aye.
Mr. O'Neal.
Aye.
Ms. Ray. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so before I hand it over to Superintendent Dr. Youngberg. I know that there's, she's going to make an addition to, has asked to make an addition to the agenda. To add in the introduction of the new Wyndham Middle School Vice Principals. And I think we don't really need to formally vote on that. It can just be part of your report, correct? To us Tracy, or do you want us to vote on it?
No, I don't think that that's necessary. It hasn't been necessary in the past. The one thing I am trying to figure out is I only see one of my new Wyndham Middle School.
Well, you can, you can hold, you can hold a minute and do the rest of your report and do it after that.
That may work since I know we're missing. Mr. Harnett and I wanted to do the two of them together. So that would, that would be great if Tracy's okay with staying on for a few more minutes.
Okay.
All right.
Um, but before you get started, I just want to point out to people who are watching this or participating in this meeting, that there was a well deserved editorial in yesterday's Willmanic Chronicle. Noting Dr. Youngberg's accomplishments and steady hand and vision. And, and it's very rare that we get something in the local media that really recognizes what the good things that are going on in this district. And I just think it was a wonderful, well deserved editorial. And I don't want to go without having that noted for everybody.
Thank you Lynn.
There's people clapping.
I appreciate that clapping works now. I do appreciate that positive press, as I said to you earlier, it works for the kids, right? The, the more positive energy we can get out there about the school system, the better the kids are. So better off the kids are, so I appreciate that. All right, so the first thing I want to review with, with the Board of Ed while we're waiting to see if Mr. Harnett's having some technical difficulties or what's going on. I want to share with you, today is June 23rd. So it is the official day that the district was required to publish on its website. It's return, safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan. This is the plan that allows the district is one of the requirements in order for us to access the ARP S R funds, so SR3 as they call it. So thanks to the work of Laura and Janet. We have a beautifully designed plan. I give them the meat and they make it look good. It is on our website, so I'm going to share my screen in just a second. And go through the plan with you and, and I'm just waiting to hear back from what's happening with the second. Assistant Principal there. Just give me one second to pull up the screen.
Well, that's coming up, welcome Tracy Lambert. We're just on the item number one on the superintendent's reports.
I apologize, the computer just didn't want to let me in, I'm still fighting it, I'm on my phone right now, so.
Oh dear, okay.
It definitely happens.
Nice to see you.
All right, so if you're able to see my screen, it's the web, the district's website. I want to show you that under the latest news is the new link where it says, read our safe return to in-person instruction. So you click on that like every other news link. And then the plan is actually available for you to digitally scroll. It's also available in hard copy PDF, which is what I'm going to use right now, just to go through the plan with everyone. And again, it looks pretty because Laura is very talented in that department. So thank you Laura, if you can hear me. So essentially, first of all, I want to point out, this is the, a new logo, looks very similar to our old logo, but it has some nuances that will make sense moving forward. And of course, on the front page of our plan is our valedictorian Isabel Perez and salutatorian Victor Casaball, who we're incredibly proud of. So we, we put them front and center on that page. The State Department of Education requires that this plan have a total of five parts. The first part is that it addresses the health and safety strategies that the district is saying that they're, that they will follow through on in, for the next school year 21, 22. Although it's kind of a strange position to be in because we're trying to say what we're going to put in place for mitigation strategies. Even though everyone knows we actually have to follow what the State Department of Ed and the Department of Public Health tell us we have to follow. So we'll go through that in a second, but so health and safety mitigation strategies must be in the plan. Some, a general bits of information about how we plan to address our academic needs and student needs moving forward. There has to be a section focused on public comment. There has to be a section on how we plan to review the plan at least every six months as the federal government has established. And we have to make a commitment to make sure the plan is available to as many people, as many stakeholders as possible. So obviously this plan will be translated into Spanish, so that will address a large percentage of our district, it'll be both in English and Spanish, so. There's also additional information in the plan, I'm not going to go through the entire plan with you right now, but I just want to let you know that we have met the requirements for all the pieces that belong in the plan. So I'll just quickly show you, and there's a letter from the, from the superintendent and all that good stuff. So there's, it starts off with an introduction and a rationale as to why we're doing this. And obviously, this plan is being put out there because we're trying to use federal funds to respond to the impact of COVID. Our goal is to improve upon the disruption to the, to our students' learning, any interpersonal interactions and the social emotional wellbeing of our students and staff. Those are the general, the general focus areas that they, the state wants us to, to be keyed in on. But then we have five approved key, key areas for spending. And those are learning acceleration, academic renewal and student enrichment. So basically anything related to moving students to where they need to be in academics. We have family and community connections. We have social emotional health and mental health, wellbeing of students and staff. We have strategies, use of technology, staff development, the digital divide. And we have building safe and healthy schools. So all of the things that we're going to eventually put into our SR3 application, which is due in mid-August, have to fall into those five buckets and have to lead us back to the three key things that the, that the state, federal government have laid out for us. So that is why we're developing this plan is to make sure we're getting information about those five buckets and three key areas. And there's a letter that I've written, similar to the letter I've included in our budget book, just explaining, you know, where we were, where we're headed and how we hope to positively impact the district moving forward. And then we start off the plan. Let's see if I can make it larger here, so you can, everybody can see it at home. We start off the plan by going through each of the mitigation strategies. So for example, mask wearing. Right now, the State Department of Ed and the Department of Public Health requires masks to be worn in schools. That's the current guidelines that are out there. So if it stays the way it is, and we're told there are going to be changes, but they haven't given us a date as to when those changes are going to come out. If it stays the way it is, we will, we will be wearing masks in school, in summer school and in the fall. But again, we're waiting to hear what happens. We are just letting everyone know in this plan that our goal is to follow DPH and CSDE, State Department of Ed guidance on mask wearing. So what they tell us to do is what we're going to do. We've made mention of the fact that we've adopted our own mask policy and we'll make adjustments to that policy should that mitigation strategy continue moving forward. Then each of the mitigation strategies is listed here, physical distancing. Since we've already voted not to offer full-time virtual learning in the fall, we know that physical distancing can't be one of the mitigation strategies we follow. Because if everyone comes back in person, they won't be six feet apart or potentially three feet apart. So we know that's not one of the strategies we're going to follow, but we've obviously explained our rationale and, and this is a link that takes back to the board decision so that people can read it in the minutes if they so chose. We're going to continue with hand washing and respiratory etiquette. And our same thing, following the State Department of Ed and Department of Public Health guidance on cleaning and maintaining our facilities, particularly in the, in the area of ventilation, as well as on our school buses. So each, in this, in this particular section of the plan, it just goes through every item, every health and safety mitigation strategy that we'd be putting in place or not putting in place, depending on what the decisions are. As I let the board know, in our packet, our goal is going to be to follow the State Department of Ed and the Department of Public Health guidance. So if they change their guidelines, we're going to change and make the adjustments on our end. Any questions so far in that section of the, of the plan? I think it's pretty straightforward. All right, then we just give information in the plan to the COVID, about the COVID compliance team and our expectations that we will continue meeting on a daily, right now, well, we stopped meeting at the end of the school year, but we were meeting on a daily basis with this team and analyzing our COVID data. We will continue that plan and adjust accordingly based on, based on the need. Obviously, when there's a lot of cases or a lot of students or staff members in quarantine, we're required to meet more often than if there isn't. Moving forward, the continuity of services plan, I give the, the audience reading this plan some information about our school system. And if you, if you'll notice, this looks similar to the information that we included in our budget book. It's the same information, it really tells who we are from a demographic standpoint and just how different Wyndham Public Schools happens to be when compared to other districts in the state. We are very unique in our demographics, which, which I think is a positive thing. We have, we definitely have some unique challenges, but we have some unique opportunities and talents as well. Then we just go in, in the continuity of services plan and we, I'm giving general statements about some of the things that we're planning to do to support the, our post-COVID response, like an expanded summer school opportunity. Everyone knows we're moving summer school from a half-day, opportunity for a small number of kids to a full-day opportunity for about three times as many students this summer. And it is my intention to continue summer school in an expanded form, moving forward. I want it to really be an extension of the school year. So my goal is to really build the summer programming up, so kids want to come to summer, summer school. It's something that they are excited about and that they engage in and that helps them move forward and be prepared for the next school year. We're ultimately working to apply all of the things that we've learned in terms of our, our district-wide focus on social emotional learning. So we have been through extensive training with ruler, we have been through training with the responsive classroom, we have been through trauma-informed care training, and we're going to use all of this in addition to hiring additional certified specialized staff members to help support our students and potentially our staff moving forward. The DESA, if the board remembers, is the assessment, it's a very quick assessment that teachers can give that basically highlights a student's social emotional competencies. It allows a teacher very quickly to put students into categories that would allow them to provide interventions if necessary and supports or recognize students as having a skill that they could potentially support their, you know, other community members. So we are going to continue with the debt, excuse me, the DESA next year. Our district actually implemented the DESA a year before the state decided to make it a requirement. So we're out in front of that and kind of proud of that, and that would be connected back to Project Aware's work. As most of you have heard, we're, we're moving the district in terms of teaching and learning toward a more project-based learning approach. We're trying that out in summer school and I, it's, you know, it's new learning, so there's definitely some, some growing pains. But I think once we get to a place where project-based learning is something that people are much more comfortable with and willing to try, I think you're going to see that the students are going to be more engaged and interested in participating and so will our teachers. They'll feel more empowered to facilitate the work. So that is one of the biggest shifts that we're going to be making. And again, project-based learning does not mean that we're giving up on grade level standards. Quite frankly, it's the opposite of that, but I know it does sometimes make people nervous. We, we will be focused on prioritized grade level standards. The leadership team took part in a mini PD on Friday, June 18th, from the Connecticut Center for School Change. We were lucky enough to have Dr. Isabel Stevenson with us. She gave us basically an overview of, of their, the Connecticut Center for School Changes approach to acceleration over remediation. Essentially, we're trying to move away from putting kids in intervention and having the gaps that exist between them and their, and their grade level peers get wider and wider. So we're going to focus on accelerating our students, giving them more access to grade level skills and scaffolding if they need supports, rather than remediation. And obviously, we're going to have a very clear-cut attendance focus, particularly after the, what we learned from COVID and our, and our struggles with district, with chronic absenteeism in the district, historic struggles. It's not just because of COVID, they've been struggles for us for a while, so that will definitely be a focus. And the community has asked if we are going to have before and after care and we are going to have a full before and after school program. I know we had, we were struggling with some staffing, but that is our intention to put the before and after school program back in place so that our family members have a program they can rely on. And all of the work, by the way, this is a, a sort of a working document. If the State Department of Ed gives us feedback that we have to make adjustments or additions, revisions, we will happily do that. But every bit of work that we're doing in the Wyndham Public Schools comes back to our strategic plan, which is linked here in our portrait of the graduate. So we have the, those documents included in this, in this report as well. Public comment, you, the board members will notice these dates look very similar to an email I sent to you. It's pretty much the, the calendar of communication. And these are links that take us to the dedicated webpage where, where you can take the survey and help us figure out how to spend that ARP S R money. This will take you to the dedicated email that will allow you to write an email and tell us how you want us to spend that money. So we are looking for ways to engage the community and get their input. I was on WILI this morning wrapping up the school year. And one of the things I mentioned to Wayne Norman was please visit our website, or I mentioned to the community in general. Visit our website, tell us how you'd like to see the school district spend the ARP S R funds. So we're interested in hearing from, from students, you know, age appropriate, from family members, from staff, anyone that has something to share with us, we're interested in hearing from you. And again, as I mentioned, the, the ARP S R application is due in mid-August. And it is the state's expectation and the federal government's expectation that that application actually includes feedback from the community. So we need to reference that feedback. So I can't actually finish the application until I get the feedback. And actually, I was impressed, Janet shared with me how many people have already responded to our survey. It's, it's pretty impressive, people are reaching out and saying, here's, here's the idea I have, here's what we need. So we're definitely going to take that into consideration. This looks like Wyndham Middle School's promotion ceremony picture. All right, and every six months, the district is required to review this plan and either make updates or adjustments on the application. So there'll be, you'll be hearing about this every six months, starting with today, June 23rd. And again, as I mentioned, it will be offered in an understandable and uniform format. So families who, who speak Spanish will have access to it as well. And then everyone has seen our mission statement, vision and theory of action, as well as our district priorities. Nothing has changed, it's all just included because all the decisions we make are going to come back to these priorities. And we'll just end here and I'll take any questions you might have with this. You've seen this graphic, our portrait of the graduate and the breakdown of each of the characteristics we hope to focus on. So that is essentially what, we've met the requirements that the State Department of Ed put out for us and we published our plan today on time and I am open for questions.
Thank you, Mark, I see your hand up.
Thank you. Tracy, how aggressive are we going to be in getting this out to the community? I know it's on our website, I know we can access it that way, but are we going to send copies to the library, to access agency, to the Wyndham Community Regional Office there on Main Street? I mean, a little more aggressive, reach out to the community to make sure that people get access to this report. Just send a couple of copies to various places.
Okay, I certainly can take that feedback and, and do that. We are sending out an email directly to town officials in hopes that they'll also share it. But I, I can't argue with that, we can certainly push it out. Are there any other ideas for sharing?
I was wondering if in Facebook and Instagram, can you make it shareable, quote unquote, in my English? So then we can post it in our pages, but sometimes things are not.
Okay, I can find out about that, that sounds like a Laura question, but we'll work on that.
See Laura. Laura's gave a thumbs up.
All right, so she says we can do it, then we can do it.
Thank you Laura. I like, I like Mark's idea of like proactively going out to some civic and other organizations in the town and asking for their input.
Absolutely. I can certainly work on that. All right, if there aren't any other questions, I will drop back. I see the, Mr. Harnett has joined us, so we can get started. What, what I had hoped to do tonight, what I'm planning to do tonight is to introduce you, the Board of Ed members, to our two new administrative team members. They are the Assistant Principals at Wyndham Middle School, just recently hired. And as I shared with the board in an email, my goal is toward the end of the summer, or at least the end of July, we should have a key, most of our key administrative positions filled by then. And I'd like to have an in-person meet and greet, so you can get to meet everyone at the same time. But because these two special people I'm about to introduce you tonight were already hired, I thought it made sense to at least bring them forward in our last virtual meeting and then we'll have you meet them when, when we have the, the larger meet and greet, if that works for the board. Okay, so I'm going to start off with Tracy, Ms. Tracy Goodell Pelletier, who you can see there, I see her waving at the top of my screen. She is a lifelong school leader and professional educator from the local area, a proud Wyndham Whippet, Wyndham High School class of 1989. Tracy taught in Howard County, Maryland, Ellington and Lebanon, Connecticut, public schools before having the opportunity to help create and establish the ACT Magnet High School on Main Street in Willamette back in 2003. After 12 years leading ACT, Ms. Goodell Pelletier returned to Wyndham Public Schools as a team leader, mentor and a teacher at CH Barrel STEM Academy. She is currently pursuing her EDD in school leadership. She is also currently one of our summer school coordinators, which will be interesting, we got to figure out that whole transition trace, but we're, we're on it. In her free time, she focuses on all things health and fitness, including teaching advanced spin classes at the gym. She is looking forward to being a part of a building leadership team once again, and she will be our sixth grade Assistant Principal at Wyndham Middle School. Welcome aboard Tracy.
Thank you so much, thank you.
And. Do you want to, does, does, do you want to say a few words? Anything you want to say?
Yeah, Tracy, you have anything you want to share?
I don't want to put you on the spot, but if there's something you'd like to say.
No, I, I'm very excited, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to help lead in Wyndham. I have always thought my time with East Con's ACT on Main Street was part of the community, help, helping students of the community as well in Wyndham. And so being a Whippet, a graduate, a long-time resident, a student of the area, I am delighted and excited to come back and help at the middle school level.
Thanks Trace. And next, I'm going to introduce to you Mr. Matthew Harnett. And then well, after Matt says a couple of words, we'll just go back to Dr. Ware, because this is sort of putting his team back together, right? So, all right, Mr. Matthew Harnett, he started teaching, he started his teaching career in Fairfax, Virginia, just outside of Washington DC. He and his wife then returned to Connecticut, I believe in 1999, if I remember from his resume correctly, in order to raise their children close to their grandparents. Mr. Harnett spent several years teaching middle school in Connecticut before pursuing his desire to move into leadership and becoming an administrator. He brings to Wyndham previous administrator experience from several different systems, including New Britain, Torrington and most recently Bristol. In addition, Mr. Harnett has spent the past two years working as an educational consultant and program planner for Horton, Mifflin and Harcourt. This non-traditional leadership work took him to a variety of school systems all over New England and the Northeast, where he worked with incredibly talented educators on school and district improvement plans and teacher development. He has a true passion for working in diverse urban communities and is happy to be joining the Wyndham Public Schools family as the seventh grade Assistant Principal at Wyndham Middle School. Welcome aboard Matt.
Thank you. No, I will parrot a lot of the same things that Tracy was saying. I am incredibly grateful and humbled to be joining Dr. Youngberg and Dr. Ware to work at the middle school in Wyndham. You know, people call me crazy, but you know, middle school is my roundhouse. I love working with that age group, I love being in middle schools and I'm just really excited seeing people shaking their heads. You do have to have a couple screws loose, you know, and then on top of that, Dr. Ware was, you know, blessed enough to give me the seventh grade, which is even the best grade in the world to teach and work with. So I'm thrilled, I'm actually going to be in district tomorrow. So I'm hoping to, you know, stick my head around and meet a bunch more people. But I'll look forward to meeting more of you face to face, you know, at the end of the month, as we start to move through the rest of summer. It's going by quick, so thank you, thank you for this chance.
Thank you Matt, Dr. Ware.
Good evening, Board of Education members. I'm just saying, I would just like to say I'm excited, you see me probably smiling ear to ear over here. It's nice to have a full, complete team. I just want to welcome officially Mrs. Tracy Goodell Pelletier and Mr. Matthew Harnett to the admin team at Wyndham Middle School. And you're going to join the team with Ms. Joanne Hadat, who's going to, got a little bit of promotion in my eyes as the eighth grade Assistant Principal next year. So I just want to say that this is the opportunity that I was looking for, a complete team, be able to hire and to actually mold people in the vision along with Dr. Youngberg. And I think this is the chance that I've been looking for, so I'm going to continue leading fearlessly. And I appreciate your, I would say, support as well as your confidence in me and know that I'm here to service the kids. So I thank you so much for the opportunity. And I just would like to thank Ms. Elderay and Ms. Lynn Hyde on behalf of the Board of Ed members for being at the eighth grade promotion, because I think it was just a fabulous event. So thank you for representing the board there, so thank you so much for supporting Wyndham Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Ware. I, I appreciate hearing, hearing all that and I can see you're excited, that's a good thing, right? We need, we need complete teams working together in support of kids, love it. All right, any other questions or thoughts on that?
Tracy?
We just put a moratorium on hiring people named Tracy, because this is getting more and more confusing all the time. Sometimes we're in meetings and they're like Tracy and Dr. Youngberg and I look at each other like, are they talking to you or are they talking to me?
It's true, and we all spell it the same way too, that's interesting.
Oh, great, good. Oh, I'll just go with Lynn, but now I can't go with my middle name either, because I'm just stuck.
All right.
Well, thank you, this is exciting news for the middle school and for the district. Thank you for helping round out the team and, and Dr. Ware, it was a pleasure to be at the middle school graduation. It was, was a lovely, lovely evening, thanks.
And I, oh, I'm so sorry, just wanted to say one more thing.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that the, the committee that was involved in getting Tracy and Matt to be our finalists involved a number of middle school staff members. So I want to thank them for being active participants in the process of hiring the next two administrators. That is a really, Marcus being one of them for sure, but I, it really was a collaborative effort, so I appreciate them and I wanted to make sure I said that.
Thanks. And we do look forward to meeting people in person. We're going to start having in-person Board of Ed meetings in July. And I think it'll be refreshing to see people face to face and to meet people.
I just want to say to Dr. Ware, it was a pleasure being there, I love the middle school. And welcome to, we'll call you Tracy P. and Mr. Matt. Welcome and thank you.
I've been signing everything Tracy GP, so you know, there's a distinction, GP, but anyway, just so you know.
Okay, well, thanks. So back to you, Dr. Youngberg, for the last part of your update.
Sure, I can share that as of Monday night, we had our. Last renovate, Wyndham High School renovated as new meeting, and they did share that they're going to start the asbestos abatement. As early as August fourth, which means that is the official start of the project, so. They gave me the August fourth date, and they talked about doing some work on the swing space that they'll be using. As early as August sixteenth, so right around the corner, we will start that project, which is, as I said on the Wayne Norman Show this morning. It's the outside transformation. Of what is already happening inside the building, so it's really exciting stuff to have a building that you can drive by and look at and know that it's got the same positive energy. And it looks the right way as the things that are happening inside the building, so now we just need to get that, the message out to the community that. There's a lot of misconceptions about the high school that just honestly and truly are not true. And we need to change some of that, and I think having a new building is going to be part of that from a psychological standpoint, so I'm really excited that we're about to start that. Project, and I know many people on this board and in the town have worked really hard to make this work. Years and years and years in the running to get this project up and running, so August fourth can't get here soon enough, as far as I'm concerned. Any question, any other questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we're on to committee reports. I know there probably aren't. A lot of committee reports, but. Is there, well, Mark. We just had a Finance and Audit Committee meeting this evening before the meeting. Is there anything you'd like to report to folks?
Well, the ink hasn't dried on the minutes yet, but I'll give you the highlights. Essentially, we have the transfers in today's, tonight's packet. That you're going to review the board, the committee went through them, we, we understand the questions and recommend them for approval. There's a lot of them on there, has to do a lot, again, has to do a lot with transferring money because of grants, transferring money because of the two percent. Setback that we can hold for next year, transferring money to correct all the accounts. Nothing too extraordinary, so that'll be on the report for tonight. And then we're planning at this point for a potential meeting in July fourteenth before the July fourteenth Board meeting. So that we can get a final. Report on, on the end of the year and the end of the year, and what surplus we're returning to the town. And where the rest of the money goes, and those are the two highlights led from, from the meeting.
But does anybody, thank you, Mark, does anybody have any questions for, for, for the, for Mark? Okay, school planning and design.
We haven't met since the beginning of the month.
Okay, Policy Committee, Elda? Anything?
Well, we postponed our meeting for tomorrow. We're waiting for. The packet to come in from. From our attorney, and then we were, we will reschedule and get back to you. That's it. Have a nice summer, everyone, or have a nice June.
Well, we'll, we'll see you in the middle of July, so.
Yes, looking forward to in person.
Yeah. Executive Committee, I don't have anything to report on, on that since we last met. And the Ad-Hoc Elementary School Consolidation Committee, I know that. Paula Haney is not here this evening. She had a family event. That she. Wanted to be at. It was a special event with her grandson. So she's doing that this evening, and as everybody knows, we, we are. Are not having, there hasn't been a School Planning and Design Committee meeting since we, since we last met.
No, there hasn't been a School Consolidation Committee meeting.
I mean, a School Consolidation Committee meeting. Thank you, Tracy. I got a little tongue tied there. As everybody knows, we're waiting for more information to come in before that meeting, before that committee starts to. Do some more work, so. So now we're on to action items on the agenda, and I would entertain a motion. For approval of the revisions to the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. That we had the first reading of at our last meeting. Moved by Katina. Did I get a second?
Sure, Tracy.
Tracy, thank you, Tracy. Is there any discussion on this? I know we mentioned it our last meeting. This is a really important document. One that, you know, provides a lot of guidance for us across the district, and. I'm really glad that we're taking action on it this evening. Any other discussion? Okay, Janet, could you please do a roll call vote?
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Ms. I.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll enter. Go ahead.
I don't think my name was called.
Oh, okay. Janet?
Sorry.
Katina, how would you like to vote?
Yes, aye.
Thanks. Um. The next thing I'll, I'll do is accept a motion for approval of acceptance of a donation of an emergency response vehicle. From the town of Daville.
So moved, Elda?
Second.
Thank you.
Elda and Mark, thank you. I. I was like, when I saw this item on the agenda, I'm like, why are we doing that? And then I under, I read the explanation, it's really exciting. For the students to be able to have an actual. Emergency response vehicle to, to learn. With and in, so. Is there any, any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote then, please, Janet.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Ms. I.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is approval of the budget transfers, and Mark, I believe the amount was. One million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars.
Correct.
Correct. I'll entertain a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mark, seconded by Katina. Any questions on that? It's a lot of money, but we're getting near the end of the year and. Rita is truing everything up for us. Okay, hearing none, I will take a roll call vote, please, Janet.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Ms. I.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
I haven't had time to go through everything, so I'm abstaining.
Mr. O'Neill.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and then I'll entertain a motion, motion for approval of the. Support for Parent and Pregnant Teens Grant. The explanation was in your packet. Brendan?
So moved.
The motion. Seconded by whom?
Tracy.
Okay, Tracy, thank you. Any discussion on this?
Is this a new grant or a continuation?
Suzanne?
Yeah, so this is the last year of this grant, and it has taken us a long time to get the contract from OEC. We finally just got our numbers.
Okay, so it's a continuation, but this is the last year?
That is correct. It ends this year. And there's no, at this point, looking at federal funding to continue this work. We'll have to incorporate it into the work that our social workers are doing. High school.
Questions or discussion on this? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, please, Janet.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Ms. I.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're on to a quick discussion item. I, I just want to remind Board members that. I, back in March. I asked for feedback from the board on, on items. That. Board members would like to spend some more time on. As, you know, as a board, and. I met with Dr. Youngberg last week to talk about the next six months. And tried to incorporate into. Our planning for the next six months. Ways that we can cover. And the items, the, the issues that were raised by board members when we met in March. So I'm just going to read out to you. The sort of plan at this point, and. I wanted to raise with you that. That we're going to be planning on doing the Cabe Self-Assessment, Board Self-Assessment. In the month of August. And we will also be doing. Quick, looking at the Curriculum Revision Plan, which will be presented to the board. In August, so as we start having our meetings over the coming months, we're going to really. Get more information and spend more time in our board meetings talking about. And doing these things. We do have a board retreat scheduled for September ninth and tenth. And I don't want to take time this evening talking to you all about what your schedules are. But traditionally, we have had the board meeting. I mean, the board retreat starts sometime on that Friday. And then also continue during the day on Saturday. And what I'm going to do is send out an email to you all. And ask you to respond to me and let me know what your availability will be. On the ninth and the tenth, so we can figure out, are we starting at noon? On, on Friday, or are we starting at? Three o'clock and going till eight o'clock? And then what time are we starting on Saturday and ending on Saturday? What we've talked about, Dr. Youngberg and I. Addressing at the retreat in September. Are finalizing district strategic goals. Review of the superintendent's evaluation process. Including the Board of Ed's self-assessment. And, you know, we had talked about the feedback loop that we want to get from the community over the course of, of the fall. We also want to spend a significant amount of time. Talking about the elementary school consolidation. And getting an update on. On, you know, how things are going with the facilities master plan. The fiscal, more, more breaking down of the fiscal implications of doing this or not doing this. Talking about class sizes, use of the Wyndham Middle School. For grade five possibly, or possible reconfiguration. Of the schools when we consolidate. I mean, there's a ton of stuff. For us to unpack, unpack as a board and spend a little more time talking about there. So our thought is that that may be like a big chunk of time on Saturday that we can really dedicate to that. We also want to talk about the Wyndham High School and an update on. The renovate as new project, what that's going to mean. And also to bring the board more into a more complete understanding. Of the Wyndham High School pathways and, and how programmatically. Things are moving forward on that. We also talked about. Doing some. Work with Dr. Youngberg over the summer on the goal setting. So that, you know, when we did her evaluation, we talked about setting goals for the upcoming year. And there were other ideas that people brought up about. The curriculum textbook plan and. And how we. So people had asked to have a better understanding, and board members may have some thoughts or questions about all of that. Later in the fall, we'll be having the facilities master plan update. And we'll be able to spend some more time talking about that. That will obviously go through the School Planning and Design Committee first. Before it gets, you know, talked about at the, at the board level. So those are just some of the things that people had brought up. That we want to spend a little more time delving into, and as you all may remember. When we were talking with Dr. Youngberg about her evaluation, we talked about returning to more. Workshop oriented board meetings, so there will be other topics that will be coming up. When we have our board meetings for us to do a little more work on. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that? I, I know it's a lot to throw at you. I'm going to try to put something in writing. To get it all out to you in the coming weeks, so that. You know, we can make adjustments once you all get a chance to look at it, and if there's something that we're missing. I want to make sure I incorporated into our planning. Any thoughts, questions, concerns?
I hope we, we do talk also about the social, emotional well-being of the students and staff as. You know, the new year has started and what's happening. Just because he's so important.
Is there anything else I should be considering? The other thing I forgot to mention in my overview is that there are elections coming up. In November, and there may be some. Changes in the, in the makeup of the Board of Education. So obviously, after, after the November elections, you know, some of us are not up for election this year, other seats are. So depending on where we are with the new, new board configuration. We probably will bring in some training and, and other, other supports for the board. So that would be sort of moving forward after November. Okay, so seeing no hands, I'm going to just put something together for you all. Dr. Youngberg is working with me on this, and. Please reach out if you have any questions after you see the memo, and please respond to. Me with information about your availability on September ninth and tenth, so that we can start planning how we're going to. Cover what we need to cover in the retreat. Appreciate it. Thanks. The next thing on the agenda is. Public comment, and after that, then we're going to be going into a non-meeting, which will be. Not open to. The public that will be with, you know, with the attorney and the, and the board members, so we'll put that last on the agenda, so people. Who want to weigh in with public comment can do that now. Anybody want to speak during public comment? Anybody want to speak during public comment? And Janet also wanted me to mention to the board members that you're receiving an email with a link for the non-meeting portion of this meeting. That's a very confusing thing to say. The non-meeting portion of this meeting, you'll get a separate link in your email for that. So you might want to start looking for that.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm assuming Jessica will be getting that also, Janet. Okay. Um, so anybody want to speak during public comment? Raise your hand or unmute. A quiet group this evening. Okay, so hearing none, I will entertain a motion to go into a non-meeting for discussion concerning the proposed Wyndham Federation of Educational Personnel Contract.
I don't, excuse me, I don't have any, I haven't received any email with this direction for the non-meeting.
She just sent it.
I'll reset.
At 7:46.
I'll reset it to Ms. Ray.
Thank you.
So I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Do I get a second?
Second, second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any objections? Okay, so folks, we're going to come back if we're taking any action. We'll come back to this link, Janet, correct?
Yes, that's correct. You'll come back to close out the meeting.
Okay, so you're going to have to get out of this meeting, board members and other people that are going into executive, into that non-meeting with us. Okay? Thanks.
Congrats, Matt and Tracy. Once again, thank you.
Okay, I'm just waiting to see that we get our board members back in. Still waiting. See four of the seven. Who are we missing? Mark and Katina. Just waiting a second, see if Mark and Katina get on. There's Katina. Tracy Lambert, while we're waiting to see if Mark gets on, would you like to make the motion since you were on the bargaining committee?
If you wish. You didn't give me language?
Nobody gave me any language.
I can figure it out.
Okay. Well, we do have, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six. We have six of us. We have a quorum. I don't know what happened to Mark. Got lost in the, in the virtual world.
And maybe it happened to me, too. Oh, there he is.
There he is. Thanks. Great. So I will entertain a motion regarding the proposed Wyndham Federation of Educational Personnel Contract. Tracy?
I make a motion that we approve the negotiated educational personnel contract effective retroactively to July 2020 through July 2023, or June 2023, negotiated by the district.
Second.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Katina. Is there any discussion?
Just saying thank you to all the paraprofessionals and all the staff and all the challenges they have had to also face this past year.
We all echo that. So without further discussion, let's take a roll call vote on the motion. Janet, please.
Caban Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle. Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:17.
So moved.
Meeting adjourned. We'll see you all in July.
Happy Fourth of July, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Happy Fourth of July.